Okay, the mics are on. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Form is present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
All right, we're going to have a public comment. Members of the public that wish to address the City Council. This is the public access method by phone. You would dial 888-251-2949, or 215-861-0694. Using this specific access code. For March 15th. Pound. Wait three seconds and press pound again. Again, the number is 888-251-2949, or 215-861-0694. Operator, any callers?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one caller.
Go ahead, caller.
Caller, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nancy Hannah. I am calling from Better Neighbors L.A. in regards to item number two. Better Neighbors L.A. is a group of housing advocates, homeowners, tenants, and workers, who are concerned about the impact of illegal short-term rentals on our community. And I'm calling in support of a proposal to extend the Inglewood Moratorium on Short-Term Rentals. Better Neighbors applauds the city's research of best enforcement practices, and we encourage Inglewood to consider adopting the Santa Monica standards requiring all short-term rentals be hosted. Hosted short-term rentals protect housing, ensure supervision.
She's talking about the public hearing.
Oh. Ma'am, that is the public hearing. So, right now, you can come back. Well, will you go ahead and finish? So, this will be your comment for the public hearing. Go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
So much. I apologize if I called during the wrong time.
No, no problem.
Okay. Hosted short-term rentals protect housing, ensure supervision, reduce nuisance, and safety concerns, and are more effectively and efficiently enforced. Inglewood should require all short-term rentals to be hosted to best protect housing and the safety of its residents. Thank you so much.
Okay, ma'am, but we're going to be better than Santa Monica. I spent 15 years there. We'll be better.
Oh.
Promise you that.
That's good to hear. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll close public comments if that's the last caller. Now, we're going to go to the library. Could we have people come up to the podium? Whoever would like to speak can come up to the podium.
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, there are no speakers. With that, we'll close public comment. Item one, CS one, and H one.
Want register?
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members. Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Buds.
Aye. Since I think PH one may take longer, does anybody object to us going to PH two?
No objection.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider extension of Urgency Intra-Mordance Number 22-05 for an additional 10 months and 15 days, or upon the effective date of a short-term rental ordinance, whichever is first, continuing a moratorium on any and all building permits, business licenses, conditional use permits, or any entitlements for establishing or expanding any short-term rental anywhere in the city of Inglewood.
Okay, so notice of this hearing been given in a time, form, and manner as required by law. And do you have the affidavit on file?
Mayor, notice has been given and affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received on the matter?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, is there a staff report on the matter?
Yes, Ms. Alicia Fong, project coordinator for the Housing Protection Department. She manages the short-term rentals program.
Ms. Fong, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name is Alicia Fong. I'm the program coordinator for the Housing Protection Department. I am the manager of the short-term rental division. This public hearing was set to request an extension of the Intra-Mordance Number 22-05 for the time period of 10 months and 15 days, or upon the effective date of a short-term rental ordinance. The extension will continue the current moratorium that prohibits any and all building permits, business licenses, conditional use permits, or any entitlements for establishing and expanding any short-term rentals from operating anywhere in the city of Inglewood. Very importantly, the moratorium prohibits the use of STRs, short-term rentals, as party houses. The moratorium also requires host platforms to immediately remit and transient occupancy taxes for any short-term rentals operating in the city of Inglewood as of January 1st, 2022. Staff has been working with the technology vendor to identify properties that have been advertised on the internet and operated as a short-term rental. Once the properties are identified, staff will work with other city departments to collect any transient occupancy taxes owed to the city. Staff has been studying short-term rentals, regulatory rules, and acted by other cities. We are compiling the best practices to assist us in development of procedures for the regulation of short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can answer. Any questions?
I have one quick question, Mayor. Once we identify any transient, short-term, you know, it was mentioned that we collect taxes, which is good. That's the way we should do it. But I guess my question is, if say we send them a bill, they don't send it back. Is that, are we in a position now where that it can be placed on the tax rolls? I don't know. Have we gone that far, or is that an action?
We haven't gone that far, but we would have to do it just as we do with a water bill.
Yeah.
We would have to have a staff report that says that we are going to lean the property, a lean on properties for a bill owed to the city.
Exactly. So, we would have to create our pathway to get there.
Exactly.
And that's, that was my question.
Yes.
Because I know it doesn't, we wouldn't be able to use the hotel when we would have to create another one separate.
Exactly.
Okay, that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Fong.
Thank you.
So, now, we're ready to receive public comments. Operator, are there any callers on the line?
Mayor, at this time, there are no callers on the line.
Okay. If there are no council comments.
Check in the library, Mayor.
Oh, check in the library. Are there any? Or anyone in the library want to make public comment for the public hearing?
No comments, Mayor.
All right.
Mayor, I move extending the interim ordinance.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members. Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye.
So, now, we'll go to PH one. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to receive, consider, and discuss adjusted census data from the National Demographic Corporation.
Has the notice of the hearing been given in the time, form, and manners required by law? And is there an affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have we received any communications on the matter?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, is there a staff report on the matter?
Yes, Ms. Ayesha Thompson, City Clerk. We'll give the staff report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fields. Hello, Mayor and City Council. It is my pleasure to stand before you to present this item to you today in regards to redistricting our city. It was determined earlier that we did not have to do any redistricting based off our population. However, law says that we have to go further now because we have to look at the age and the ethnicity of each district. And so, we weren't, meaning our city, we weren't able or capable of handling that port, that portion of it. So, we had to reach out. And so, I reached out to the National Demographic Corporation and spoke with Mr. Doug Johnson, who will be giving a presentation to let us know the findings as to why now I'm coming back asking that we reconsider the draft maps that were provided. It was determined that District One was overly populated based off age and ethnicity, and District Three was underpopulated with age and pop, and age and ethnicity.
So, that was Eloy's fault, right?
Yes, it was. He took all the Latinos from us. That's what it was.
We usually don't have that problem.
But it's a good thing. It's okay. And in the, in the making of that, we were also able to, you know, try and accommodate District One and Two and by bringing in Ed Vincent Park, because that property is so large. We wanted to allow District One and Two to share Ed Vincent Park. And so, we've, not me, but the help with Doug. And I want to introduce Mr. Doug Johnson. Not only is he the president of the National Demographic Corporation, but Mr. Johnson has a great history here in our city. His great-grandfather lived here in the city of Inglewood. And not only that, but his great-grandfather, the school Frank De Parent is named after his great-grandfather. So, we are honored. We are pleased to have him back in the territory of which he's come from. And so, Mr. Johnson, if you would come and please address our council with the findings of each, each map that's been given.
So, Doug, how did you arrange that?
It truly is an honor to come back, you know. Actually, you'll appreciate, my, my mom tells the stories of, you know, he was a judge and elected. And so, his house is always cool because he had the first radio in the area and the first TV in the area because that's how he got all the neighbors to come over and keep in touch as an elected official. He was also on the school board back in the day. So, many, many stories about the judge.
Welcome back.
So, my pleasure. So, so I'll keep this fairly brief, but really, as it was just talked about, we're not looking at huge changes in how these lines are drawn, just some small adjustments. Just kind of to set the stage, we are looking at the, the rules. There are federal and state requirements for how these lines are drawn. So, the federal ones are the ones most people know. Equal population, you have to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act and not engage in racial gerrymandering. Pretty straightforward. The state has added a new set. These are brand-new for 2020, called the Fair Maps Act. And so, in priority order, the districts have to be contiguous. They have to avoid, wherever possible, dividing neighborhoods and communities of interest. Try to follow easily identifiable boundaries, major roads, rivers, that kind of thing. And then try to be compact, which the law defines as not bypassing one group of people to get to another. And the law also prohibits considering or favoring or disfavoring political parties when drawing council district lines. So, those two are statutory requirements. And then often, what are called traditional principles, we considered minimizing the number of voters who are expecting to vote in 2022, but get bumped into a 2024 seat. People, some, some often get bumped the other way, but they don't really mind as much getting to vote faster than being delayed. And then, the courts have said you can look at where the council is and trying to avoid pairings. You can also accommodate very, very slightly within that equal population number of future population growth. And then the other one that comes up in particular here is preserving the core of existing districts. The idea there is that people in these districts have worked together for, in some cases, decades, getting to know each other and working on campaigns. So, unless there's some other reason to disrupt that, you try to avoid disrupting those networks of voters that exist. So, those are the rules we have in the back of our minds as we're looking at these lines. Again, your current map actually, even though it was drawn before these rules were in place for the state, pretty well complies with them. So, we're not looking at huge changes. As the clerk mentioned, District Three does need to pick up some population. And so, we looked at, we have four maps to show you today. Map A simply extends District Three to the east, north of Manchester. So, it goes over to Prairie and picks that up. And then this map actually moves all of Ed Vincent Junior Park into District Two, along with the homes that are on the east edge and the north side of the park. So, that's option A. Option B is essentially the other approach with Ed Vincent. So, this moves Three over to Prairie, the same as, as A does, but does not move Ed Vincent Park. And so, it's just that simple change between, between Three and One. And you notice we're not mentioning District Four. District Four actually is population balanced, so it doesn't need any changes.
Yay! That's just today, huh, Doug? Tell her what we talked about, about District Four.
I will say, enjoy it now because we were talking about, with the stadium and all of that happening, 10 years, when you come back in 10 years, it's going to be a whole different story, I'm sure.
That's in 10 years, I worry about it then.
That's right.
It is one of the things to keep in mind is that the numbers we're, we're. The numbers we're working with are April of 2020. So, they're almost two years old, and there just wasn't much of the development around the stadium at that point that the census counted. So, those two maps, NDC drew. Map C actually came in through the clerk's outreach efforts, who did get a map in from the public. This is lots of changes in this map. Really, you can see, actually, District One shifts a little west over to La Brea, and then District Three makes up for that by coming over down in the south and moves. It actually picks up the, the current little western arm of District Four. And then there's some, about three blocks, three city blocks from District One at the north end, move into District Two, and a strip of homes on the east side of the stadium. Just, it's really a half a block on the east side of the stadium moves into District Four from District One. So, we're happy to see the input. It's certainly.
But it looks like that exacerbates the imbalance, though.
It, it makes, actually, there's enough people down in that southern piece where Three moves over. Let me see if the mouse is working. So, Three picks up the, what currently is District Four down at the bottom, which is very heavily populated. So, that small area there picks up.
Create a, I think the mayor's talking about the socioeconomic imbalance, which exists if you do it this way.
Definitely, definitely, yeah. So, this is something we welcome.
Doug, we have to, we have to, we have to spell it out. Does this work? Does this map work to put us in compliance with law?
It does work from the numbers perspective, but it does a lot more than needs to be done. So, those, those points I mentioned before of trying to keep the cores of the districts together, those kinds of things, avoiding shifts, those are not statutory requirements, but they're what the courts call traditional principles. So, this meets the statutory requirements, but it doesn't follow those traditional principles.
Okay.
Yeah. But we are, we always want to appreciate, you know, when the residents show up and draw a map.
We love it that someone would take this kind of time. We love it.
And then, in working on these different maps and looking at different options, Map D is the last map I have to show you. It has that same Manchester Boulevard over to Manchester Terrace and up Prairie, addition to District Three to balance the populations of Three and One. And then it leaves all the northern population of District One in One, but it picks up the west end of the park. So, the Ed Vincent Junior Park, essentially, the tennis courts and everything west of the tennis courts technically would go into Two. There is, the county does require that each piece of land be assigned to a single district. So, and we have to follow parcel lines. So, that just happens to be where the parcel line goes through the park. But essentially, for all intents and purposes, it would just be that Districts One and Two would be sharing the park. We just have to formally show some division line in there. So, that does do that without moving any people.
Yeah, because they're parcels.
So, they just split it right down.
They split it down in parcel. Okay, thank you very much. There's a staff report. Is there any public comment? Operator?
At this time, there are no public comments.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it again. The dial-in for open session is 888-251-2949, or 215-861-0694. And the access code once again is 809-06-07. Pound. Wait three seconds and press pound again. And so, we're going to let speakers from Library Lecture Hall speak, and we'll keep the lines open until then. Please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody, especially Inglewood residents. I want to first call to the attention of the City Council that in order to remain in compliance with the Fair Maps Act, you needed to have done two public hearings, allowing the public to participate as well as give comments regarding the redistricting of this map. However, this is only our first public hearing in which the community has been allowed the opportunity to watch as well as comment on. The first one that you guys have scheduled was for March 1st. However, on March 1st, the City Council meeting, the live broadcast ended six seconds after you guys started. So, the public was unable to watch. And then many people were actually on the phone call with their hands raised, attempting to comment, and they were not allowed to do so. On top of that, when the City Council meeting was over, the city failed to post a video of the City Council meeting. So, the community still does not know exactly what was said during that hearing. I'm sure that the legislative body is aware that you guys received a cure and correct letter. And had you guys actually acted on that cure and correct letter in a timely manner, we would still be on schedule according to the schedule that you guys are trying to get everything accomplished by. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, no, we did not have our first hearing. And even to this day, as I sit here addressing you guys, there is no video posted online of that March 1st City Council meeting. Secondly, I wanted to comment on the four maps that were submitted for us to look over. And I want to recommend Map C because according to the articulation of the map, Map C is the only one that divides all four districts into 25% representation. So, I am someone who strongly believes that in order for this community to continue to thrive or even be in a position to thrive, that we need fair and equal representation across all districts. That is my comment.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon, that council meeting you talked about was not a public hearing. It was a council meeting.
On March, on March 1st?
Yes.
It was a public.
Excuse, excuse me for one moment.
I still got 24 seconds left, so I can still talk.
Well, go right ahead.
I just said it was March 1st. It was a public hearing.
Okay, and so, there were public hearings held on these days. October 26th, 2021, January 29th, 2022, March 1st, 2022.
The January one was a workshop. That actually was not a public hearing.
That, that's correct, but we did have to have a workshop.
Yeah.
And so.
Today would have been the second public hearing.
No, you're, you're, Ms., Madam Clerk, would you explain it to her?
All right, okay, thank you. So, October 26th was the original when we called for the hearing, and we had the first public hearing. And then January 29th was the workshop held, which by law, we had to have at least one workshop where the community participated, and we had that. We also had one on March the 1st. We had one on March the 8th, and then, not March the 8th, excuse me, and then today, March the 15th.
So, we've had more.
Exactly.
So, we've had more than two.
Ms. Thompson, no, no, the, the first one was scheduled to be March 1st, as Ms. Thompson just said.
No, 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 ma'am. October 26th of 2021. We had the first one.
What, what was it that was scheduled for March 1st that the community did not get to participate in?
We had, we had the, October 26th was the first one. January 29th was the workshop. The second public hearing was March the 1st. This is our third public hearing. And then March 22nd will be the fourth public hearing. And then April 5th would be the one where council would actually adopt.
Considering the fact, as I stated earlier, that the community did not have the opportunity to participate in the March 1st public hearing, it seems as if we have been excluded from this process and that you guys are not complying with the Fair Maps Act.
Well, we actually have. We've had more than two public hearings. So, thank you very much, Ms. Dixon.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And we received public comments as well, Mayor, via email, which was passed out to Mayor and Council.
All right.
Yes, sir.
The issue is, we had two public hearings. Did we fulfill the requirements?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
We more than fulfilled them. Are there any other? It looks like there's no other public comment. Operator, are there any other callers?
No, Mayor, there are no more callers.
Okay, with that, the public comment portion is now closed. I move one, two, three, and then we'll talk about four. Moving one, two, and three. Madam City Clerk.
Council members. Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
You're moving one, two, and three?
Which is just considering.
And we're going to have a discussion on four.
On the maps.
On the maps, okay.
Aye, yes, sir. Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye.
So, Madam City Clerk, if I read the public hearing instructions, we are to give direction as to our preferred draft map. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I, I move Map D, which splits the. D is in David. That splits the parcel lines through Ed Vincent Park.
Yeah, I, I support that. I'd like to hear from our council members, District One and Two, if they understand, like, you know, the actual splitting and how the intention is to equally, equal use for District One and Two in regards to the park.
And the only reason why we say split is because we have to show the county parcel. So, it's not really split. We just have to say that by law for the public.
Before, before we get into that, the reality is, it's a park that belongs to the entire city.
It does.
This is, this is, it's semantics when you say it's in a district. It's not anybody's park.
It's just for the county purposes.
Exactly. And this is, and, and, all right, so.
Just so the public will understand, oh, this is half a mine. No, it's not like that.
You made it feel less special, Jim.
It's still the use of Council One and Two.
I had to do it before.
And Three and Four.
I had to do it before they spoke.
Let's clarify that. Use it, yes, yes.
All right.
No, George, if you have any comments, go for it first, since it was in your whole district.
Okay.
Prior, go for it.
Well, I, I, and looking at all of the maps, that seems the most fair because District One lost everything.
No, you didn't. You didn't.
You got equalized. You got equalized, George.
I'm glad to see you guys at least give us part of the park.
You didn't, counsel.
But no, I think it was, it's fair than, than some of the other maps or the other maps. So I, I think this is, this is good with me.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, I'd like to take all of this apart. But I get it, right? Because of the parcel issues, I want to make sure the public understands.
Thank you.
Because it is important. When you're talking about these, these changes that are, can only occur every 10 years when we do the census. This is your big bite at the apple. This is our chance as a city, as a community, to, to get it right. And so this is based solely on our population with a few variables that get in the mix. And Vincent Park is split in two parcels. So in order to comply, because of that, part of it's gonna stay in District One and part of it is gonna go into District Two. That being said, at the end of the day, folks, like the mayor said and everybody else has been saying, it's still and will always be Edward Vincent Junior Park, always for the city of Inglewood. This is just a formality that we need to adhere to, to abide by the law. And I think we're all good with it. Map number D is in David. And so I'm, I'm, I'm good. And, and I'm gonna, I think I'm, I'm gonna expand a couple of blocks and get us some, some, some resi.
You, you'll get a few residents, counsel, but you couldn't take it all the way because then you would become overpopulated.
No, 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 I know that, but I'm just saying, I'm gonna get a couple of residents.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, you know, it's a win-win for all of us.
Yeah, all of us, I mean.
This is a win-win. And again, it's a formality that we as a city had to adhere to.
So can I move an Alachis district? Come on, man, we'd love to have you.
You can move anywhere you want to, mayor, you're the mayor.
And now you're just showing off, man.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, would you call a roll? Because I moved Eloy seconded.
Yeah.
And then we had discussion and now we're ready to vote.
Yes, okay. So this, this is for map D, and this is the map that we will go and have Doug to get drawn up, you know, freshened up for us, and we'll present that at next week's council meeting, okay? Okay, council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. Consent calendar, items two through five.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR one.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Staff report recommending approval of amendment.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, Doug. We'll be in contact. Yes, thank you. Staff report recommending approval of amendment number one to agreement number 21 dash 010 with Gannett Fleming, Inc. to incorporate California labor law requirements.
Uh, move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR two.
Staff report recommending approval of amendment number one to agreement number 22 dash 117 with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. to incorporate California labor law requirements.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR three.
Staff report recommending approval of amendment number one to agreement number 22 dash 129 with Answer Advisory LLC to incorporate California labor law requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR four.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution declaring the implementation of a level one water supply shortage a measure for all City of Inglewood water service area residents and businesses.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, A one.
Request for settlement authority in that matter?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye.
The second item was a worker's compensation claim of Ricardo Medina. And again, there's a request for settlement authority in that matter.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, CM one.
Thank you, ma'am. There are no reports from the C manager's office.
Thank you, sir, CC one.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. First, I want to just acknowledge the hard work so far with the, with my staff. We've been working tirelessly, and I just wanted to make mention that you guys are appreciated, and I love you guys, and thank you so much for putting up with me. Secondly, the GIS department has been just so great, Louis. I mean, I am so grateful for Elsa and Abby. I mean, thank you guys so, 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 so much. Thank you so much because their knowledge is so powerful and great in this process as well. And then also, I wanted to remind our residents that next week, we have another public hearing. So we'll be working tirelessly yet again to get this staff report prepared and ready. So for our residents, March 22 is our, when we bring it back to the City Council for it to be, for the map D to be introduced as an ordinance to our mayor and council. And then lastly, want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you so much. There are no appointments to boards, commission, committees. Public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered may do so at this time for one minute. Operator, are there any callers on the line?
At this time, ma'am, there are no callers.
With that, we'll go to the Library Lecture Hall. Are there any comments from any members of the public?
Yes, ma'am, we have several.
All right.
Greetings, Billion Godson African Town Coalition. You know, we was here about a year and a half ago when a lot of residents were saying they needed help with rental assistance. We know, I think September of that year, you began a program, but here we are a year and a half later. A number of people saying they're having a lot of challenges actually getting that assistance, and we know people need it right now. In addition to Inglewood, the county has a program that'll be closing at the end of this month that would help if people were more familiar with it. And also, there's a state program. So why people are struggling right now doesn't really add up. Taste to Inglewood, that was wonderful, you know, fantabulous. But we go right back to a ghost town. So, you know, Inglewood's been, you know, the, the talk of the nation right now. And Marcus Street is like right up the street from the council office. So, you know, let's get that going again. We got a lot of young black entrepreneurs that would love the opportunity with the right resources and support behind them. So, you know, let's get Inglewood back to what it was. Black power.
Thank you, sir. Black power, Eliot. He said black power.
Brown power, Eliot.
Good afternoon. Yes, on the DR four, you mentioned a water, a resolution because of this water supply shortage measure. I'm not familiar with what that is. And I'd like to know whether it has been presented to the community of Inglewood so that everyone is aware that that is about to happen. Also, I'd like to make a comment on the different map, district maps. I wanted to know if the district, the map D actually is divided equitably as you spoke or you discussed. And each, each district has a 25% of the population, as you thought was equitable.
It, it's a total population, ma'am.
But my question is.
It, it does, it does meet state requirements, yes.
What, D does not meet state requirements. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, yes, it does.
It does, but the other C was not considered? It also met the state requirements?
All of them, all of them were considered. And then, then, so what happens is the council is charged with picking one, and the one that the council picked was D.
I see, but we did have a public comment which recommended C as well.
We saw that.
Okay. So my question is, are they, is the map D that you chose, does it represent 25% of the population for each of the districts?
It, it's not done like, there's several factors of consideration, and raw population is just one of them.
But that is the main one. Because we know that District One had an inequitable amount of population.
It had more people, yes.
Yes, it did.
And it balanced that, yes.
Did you, does map D do that?
Okay, I was aware of that. So anyway, yes, ma'am, it, it does work.
Okay, I, because I didn't hear that, I didn't see what you're saying.
But that was the presentation that Doug made. So that, if you go back and go to channel 35 or go to YouTube, you'll be able to hear it again.
So you're saying that it is now equitable? Map D is the one that was most equitable?
That, that's the word, equitable, D. And so we're gonna have to move on to the next speaker now.
Yeah, good afternoon, all of you.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, my name is Michael Light. I'm a co-founder of Rainbow Children's Academy here in Inglewood. I came to this town 2002. It used to be Cadillac dealership. It was way down, and nobody even rented. But I decided to take over and build some beautiful school for community, especially for low-income families, single mom, single parents, single fathers. So took me four years to build this place. I spent all, everything, what I got, my family, tremendous amount of money. After four years, we opened up the door in 2006. Took me one year to build this place. I mean, to bring the, you know, the.
You, you're down to 10 seconds, sir. You're down to 10 seconds.
All right. So we need some support right now, not because of the COVID. Of course, the main thing is COVID, and the economy is bad now. We need some support to keep the doors open. If you guys can help us support this incredible, beautiful place, it's like a Disneyland. If we, if, if anything open to support this, keep schools open because we're getting the kids from foster kids, kids from special needs.
Sir.
Yes.
We're at time. We're at time, you're welcome to come back next week.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Just letting the speakers know, the time is one minute. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Um, so I want to follow up with the question that one of the community members asked regarding when the money for the rental, the housing key, the rental assistance program will be dispersed. That is my first question. And the next thing that I want to know is, what exactly is the City Council doing to help keep not only schools like Rainbow Academy open, but also Warren Lane? The community has basically been begging and pleading for support from our leaders in this community for quite some time now, and it seems that they continuously are ignored. So I am presenting the question to you all. What are you guys doing or what are you willing to do to actually be able to assist your constituents, excuse me, in keeping these schools open?
Thank you. As far as rental assistance, there are procedures. And when people apply, they have to meet the requirements and they have to fill out paperwork. No, you don't have to come back up. We're not, we're not, it's not a debate. You're done. You're done. You're done right now.
Who have already come.
Cut the mic. And so basically, what they have to do is they have to apply, and they have to complete paperwork. And we've issued vouchers to everyone that has applied and, and met the requirements. And then the second question, what was it? All about Warren Lane. No, I, I'm not asking you to come back, ma'am. I'm not asking you to come back. Anyway, so Warren Lane holds about 738 students. They're down to 111 students. The district owes $25 million of a $50 million loan that they got from the state to a private entity now. They've gone from about 13,000 students district-wide, district-wide in about, between 2011, 2013, down to about 6,700 students right now. The, the schools are financed by ADA financing, average daily attendance monies. And so basically, what you have is a 19-school district that now has to be financed on less than half the income they were making years ago. So with that said, the City Council does not now, nor have we ever, had operational, financial, or managerial control or input into the school district. It's a separate branch of government. It's like asking us, what were we gonna do? What will we do if the state decided to close the DMV on La Brea? Or if the post office decided to close their post office on Imperial? When your trees aren't trimmed, your streets aren't paved, you don't go to the school district and say, what are you gonna do about it? So, well, I understand the frustration. The reality is, one, the council has no authority when it comes to school closures. And I will tell you this, looking at the math for the school district, there'll be other school closures. But there is a committee that the school district has put together. They have open public meetings so that the public can input as well. But the reality is, is that you have a school that has 111 students, and it's built to house 738, and they cannot finance it. I don't want to see it close. It's, it's the only school in, in Morningside Park. Well, I, I think it's terrible for it to close. But the reality is, is that there have to be responsible financial decisions made. When I took office here, we had over 1,000 employees, I think. We're down to 755. We took away a lifetime medical promise to all of our employees because it couldn't be funded. And so the reality is, is that when people are left holding the bag, as I was left holding the bag when I came in here, as we all were, you have to make tough decisions. And right now, for the first time in the four to five interim superintendents that they had, there's an interim superintendent that is actually making tough decisions, not staying a couple of years, getting paid, and then moving on to something else, having been paid to make tough decisions. So.
And mayor, if I could just quickly add on.
You definitely can.
The student population that the mayor's talking about, going from 700-plus students to 111, that's significant because it isn't just about a unified body deciding they want to keep it open. Everybody would love to keep the, the schools open. We love our schools. However, in, in the way the schools run in the state of California, there is a direct correlation between enrollment and funds given to the school. And it's based on absences, it's based on attendance. That's how school districts get their funding. So when you go from 750 to 111, that's significant. And so, but the, to manage that school, the cost stays the same. So it, it, difficult decisions have to be made. In the city, when we were going through the tough time the mayor was talking about, we did our best to keep all our programming as, as, as high as we could. But we did cut back on, say, per se, our library hours, our, our park programs. per se, our library hours, our, our park programs. And now that we've seen an upswing, and we've grown as a city, and, and our, our budget is more healthy, we've seen ourselves come back to where we were pre that situation. They, the school district is working its way to get themselves back, and they won't be able to do it if they keep funding areas who cannot fund themselves. So, hey, I just wanted to add that, mayor, to what you said. Thank you.
Well, and you know, the, the, part of what we did, we, we, we outsourced our parking control, we outsourced our tree trimming, because we couldn't afford to do the things that we were doing, or we would have been in receivership. Tough decisions have to be made. So I applaud Dr. Torres for making tough decisions. I think it's terrible that Warren Lane will be closed. However, it's not for us to make the decisions for her. Because we, in the end, we won't be responsible if the district goes insolvent. And so that's the best way we can answer that. Yeah, of course you can. Former, former school board member.
Everything that was said. And then I also want to remind residents that we went through a potential closing of Warren Lane previously. It happened about two years ago, maybe just slightly less. And I was on the school board at the time, and it was a very difficult decision. And, um, we held, uh, public town halls with that direct community, and we asked for input, and they made it clear at that time that we would work in partnership with the community to do what we could to keep it open. And, um, although at that time, a tough financial decision was made to keep the school open, we kept it open, but then the enrollment did not really increase. It increased very slightly, but it did not increase enough to warrant keeping the school open, unfortunately. So we're here again, approximately two years later. So I can tell you that this was not a rash decision by our school district. This was a very financially sound decision that was thought out, and every, everything was done to try and keep Warren Lane open at this point. So I just wanted to make that point, mayor.
Okay, thank you. But here, here are the big numbers. From seven hundred and thirty-eight students down to a little over a hundred. From thirteen thousand students down to sixty-seven hundred. And every one of those children that attend school gets money to the district on a daily basis for daily attendance from the state. So basically, you have a, a nineteen-school district that's operating on less than half the funds they were receiving. And it, nobody wants to close a school, but there has to be money so the district doesn't go insolvent. There has to be. And there has to be a, um, an economic model so that the schools can pay the teachers competitively, so that you will have quality education that will hopefully draw people back to the district. And another thing about this particular school, they have demographers that study population patterns, and they, they look at the ages of households, and they make projections based on, um, how many children they think will be born in and raised in that district. And so they looked at all these things. And none of these pointed toward that particular school being economically viable. It's a very emotional thing. And, and people, they contact all of us all the time.
Yes.
And, and, and to this day, there are people that don't know that the district and the city are two different governmental entities. But we support Dr. Torres in the tough decisions she has to make. I don't want to see that school close, but it is not for us to make those decisions for her and her staff. All right, with that, um, we'll go to council comments. Uh, wait a minute. Operator, is there one more? Okay, hold on one second. Is there one more caller on the line, operator?
At this time, mayor, I don't see anyone on the line.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one more, one more speaker?
Hello there, Butts. I request two minutes because this is an hot agenda about housing protection.
Yes, it is so good to see you again, sir.
Yes, I appreciate the phone call, Mr. Butts.
No, I haven't had a chance to call you.
Oh, yeah.
But because, because when you and I talk, I want it to be meaningful and time-intensive, all right? Okay, so let me tell you this. Sitting on my desk is your phone number, right there in the middle of my desk. And every time I see it, I get a chill, and I say, I gotta call this guy. So let me promise you this. Let me promise you this. Today, at some point this afternoon, you and I will talk on the phone.
Agreed. But I got a, I got a problem with the, the other, uh, the housing, the short-term housing. I've had two units that I've had off the market for two years, getting it ready, and now just when I get them ready, you're gonna say that I, I can't do Airbnb? You're gonna put a moratorium on this because of some shooting at a party house? I mean, the real reason you guys are doing this moratorium is so you can collect the rent, I mean, collect the taxes, isn't it?
No, um, sir, no, that's, that's not, that's not what's going on. Basically, what's happened is, we've had, uh, an underground situation where people are Airbnb-ing. And yes, we did have a terrible incident. There were, uh, a, a property was used as a party house. But that's not the totality of the situation. This needs to be regulated. And so it's not that we don't want you to be able to Airbnb, but we are gonna have regulations because remember, this has an impact on neighborhood integrity. What do I mean when I say that? You can't have.
Two of them in my neighborhood, and they, they're great. I mean, they, they front rooms out, and it's great.
And, 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 and you know what? And probably ninety percent of people at Airbnb.
Just put, just put a moratorium on party houses.
Well, okay. We're not gonna, we're not, it's not that easy. We're not gonna do it. Um, here's what we're going to do. We're going to come up with a program that is comprehensive, that makes sense. And all we're asking you to do is hold on. It won't be ten months. It'd probably be more like six, and, uh, and you'll be able, you'll be just fine.
No, I won't be fine. I still, I still owe thirty-five thousand dollars' rent from the other two, two other units. Because you guys gave the rent away free.
Because we gave the rent away free?
Yeah, what, what do you?
Oh, oh, because of rent control? You know?
No, no, the rent control is another problem. I, I, but I do have, I am letting the board know I am gonna file a constitutional question on the rent control, and I'm gonna be filing the papers with the, with the attorney general, which I have to do, and so it gives me sixty days.
And, and you know what? And that is, evidently, you're right, sir. That's definitely you're right. So anyway, look forward to that call. I look forward to you yelling at me on the phone now. Take care. Okay. With that, unless there are any other speakers?
I think we have one more, mayor.
You know, ma'am, you, you spoke once already, didn't you?
Can I, can I comment on another area?
Ma'am, ma'am.
Am I allowed to do that? I'd like to make a comment on your discussion on the school district.
But ma'am, it, it's not like that. You only get one chance to speak.
Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't.
Okay, that's okay. No problem.
So we really do need more than one minute. I think the board.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Council comments, Councilman Dotson.
Uh, last Wednesday, we had a groundbreaking for the new pump track at Edvinson Park. He's being built in conjunction with Red Bull and Girl Cycling Foundation. The track will be used by mountain bikes, and it will be the only track of its kind in Southern California. Red Bull will be holding professional mountain bike racing tournaments there. And, uh, that is really something, guys, for us to have the only one in Southern California. So, um, when, when it's built, come out and try it. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is, um, I was able, along with, uh, the mayor and council members, to go to the opening of the Little League Baseball in Rogers Park Saturday. That was the most amazing thing I'd seen in a long time. There were over two hundred, uh, participants in that thing. And everybody, uh, had a wonderful time. It was a little long, but, uh, other than that, it was, you know, it was well-attended. Uh, and I'm sure that that Little League would do very well with the amount of people that it has. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I wish everybody a great Saint Patrick's Day, and, uh, have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Councilman Dotson. Councilman Padilla?
Thank you. Uh, you know, so let's talk about the redistricting. I don't want to beat that up. But, but, you know, there's, there's guidelines that we have to adhere to. The city clerk takes charge of this to make sure that we're following the state laws as it pertains to the redistricting. And she's doing all of that. So kudos to you and your staff. For those that want more information, please reach out to the city clerk's office, and I know she'll be able to answer and happy to answer any of your questions, uh, and concerns. There's a lot of things that we're doing here in the city of Inglewood, and, and folks will say, well, I didn't hear about this. I didn't hear about that. You know, we have a social media page, so please, you know, click on and follow the city of Inglewood on, on our social media, on Instagram. You know, we put a lot of really good, dynamic information about what's happening, uh, in Inglewood. And I know we all have newsletters. I know I do one every single Thursday.
Yes, he does.
I do a newsletter. Yes, I do.
He does.
And in that newsletter, I put information about what's happening in Inglewood. Hence, it's called What's Happening. Uh, and that's because we all want to, you know, strive to keep our community informed on, on what's going on, pertinent, timely information, so that we don't, you know, have to hear later that, you, you guys are doing super-secret stuff, and you're not sharing it with us. And that's the father's thing from the truth. So if you're interested in getting my newsletter, please send me an email to apadilla@cityofinglewood.org, or you can call my office at three one zero four one two eight six oh one, and we'll put you on the newsletter, uh, distribution that goes out again every Thursday. I want to thank, uh, this past Sunday, I did the pet vaccination clinic. Again, overwhelming response. So I want to just thank our community that came out to support, uh, the vaccination clinic, and specifically to our partners from LA County Department of Animal Care and Control. Uh, there's some pictures up there with the families and their loved ones, meaning the pets, that came out, uh, for this event. I'm gonna be having a shredding event. Again, folks are going through all their paperwork to get ready to file their taxes. So if you have papers you need to shred, bring it to our District Two Community Center on Saturday, April twenty-third. So you have like six weeks to get all your papers together and, and bring them by from nine to twelve. Uh, I too want to thank, uh, Isaac Yoshinaga. Is that right?
Correct.
Yoshinaga. Isaac is the president of Inglewood Little League. He did an outstanding job. I know Councilman Morales will cover that, but I just wanted to give Isaac a shout-out. Because Isaac, you know, grew up here, and I know you'll a touch on that, but he's also one of our workers at the library, and very, very helpful to our community and our children. So with that, thank you, and have a great week.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilwoman Dionne Falk from District Four.
There we go. Thank you, mayor. Um, first, I want to, before I get into some of my announcements, I do want to take time to thank our madam city clerk and her team. Um, I can see the, the redistricting item was huge. A lot of work for you guys. You did an amazing job. Thank you for all the communication, making sure we all understand it. We really appreciate all the work you guys did on that. Um, first, I'd like to announce that I am having my town hall. It's taking place on March thirtieth of this month. And we were supposed to have it, uh, earlier this month, but we had to reschedule. So please mark your calendars for March thirtieth at six P.M. And we will have lots and lots of great information for our, um, residents there. So look forward to seeing you on March thirtieth at six P.M. And then also, just wanted to announce that there is a state emergency rental assistance that ends March thirty-first. I know that we have received some questions regarding rental assistance, and, um, we do have that for you, that information. So, um, the flyer is up. Please write down that number. It's eight three three four three zero two one two two. And, um, that should hopefully be a great number to get you going on, uh, finding, um, rental assistance. There's also a website, housingiski.com. So, um, please check that out for additional information on rental assistance. And then lastly, for Women's History Month, I want to acknowledge our Inglewood Area Airport Chamber of Commerce President, Halima Ginyard. So she is the first African-American female president/CEO of this Inglewood Airport Area Chamber of Commerce. And she took office on February first, twenty twenty. She is, uh, also the only African-American female president that sits on the South Bay Association of Chambers of Commerce Board of Directors. So congratulations to you, Halima Ginyard. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Morales, District Three.
Hey, congratulations to all the women who do so much here in the city of Inglewood, uh, to get us through things, and at home, of course.
Homey, y'all.
Yep. The, um, uh, going back to the division of the map, you know, uh, you know, it, it's entertaining to see how, what people point at, right, in, in the public, and how they see that, you know, it's just in terms of numbers, and if we don't do what they recommend, we're not listening. The truth of the matter is, is that, you know, probably nobody knows our districts and our city more than we do. I mean, we, we, we study the numbers for, for various reasons. We, uh, understand the population. We understand the economics of our population. And, you know, we're, we're positioned, uh, in the probably the best place to make that decision. It's never easy, um, but it's, it's something that we take seriously, and we consider every aspect. So to, to think that all you do is divide by four would be ridiculous. So I just want to point that out. I think we did a great decision today. I'm glad that District One and Two are sitting both adjacent to probably one of the best parks in the region.
It's the largest park in the region.
It's the largest park in the region. And, and it's, it's not a bad time to point out the fact that any city our size, uh, these days would never have a park, uh, with those kind of resources. So we're very fortunate to have that. Um, in regards to, uh, also did want to point out and thank the Inglewood Little League, who has done a great job. We've worked, uh, closely with them to bring it back. Uh, some of the, the important parts of the story are that we lost our Little League for about ten years. Um, I contacted Coach Yosch, who's done a great job, grew up in the neighborhood, really the only baseball guy in the neighborhood that was serious, to help me bring it back. We did so with a friend of ours named Lori Sparksdale, who were both coaches. Uh, and pre-COVID, we had probably about a hundred and thirty kids sign up for the beginning of the league all over again. COVID hit, that all stopped. But what happened was they created some free baseball clinics to keep everybody motivated. And by the time that, the COVID ended, we ended up having two hundred kids for the Little League. Uh, a big shout-out for our sponsors who, who made, actually, Saturday a great day. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and my colleagues, everybody up here who, who were so supportive, and everybody was happy to see them there. Uh, but you couldn't find parking, and, you know, it was packed. And that is called great traffic for a park. When you have parents dropping off kids, picking up kids all week long for practices, that's what you call great traffic. So I'm proud of that. And, uh, thanks, Coach Yosch, thanks, Coach Sparksdale, and everybody out there who helped. Thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, thank the city clerk, Ms. Thompson, Angela, for the work that you guys did on this, uh, these maps. Uh, a lot of people were bugging you, and you guys maintained the integrity of the process, and you presented, you know, the best alternatives. I want to thank Doug. He did a great job. I want to compliment, uh, Councilman Morales on the opening of the Little League.
Thank you.
The field was packed. Like you said, the parking lot was packed. But here's something that I noted over there at Rogers Park. When I walked up, I walked past the basketball courts. There were, there were black and white youth, and they were playing basketball alongside the field. And they were, "Hi, mayor. How you doing? Hey, mayor." And I said, "Oh, this is unusual." Uh, there were great kids populating one hundred percent of that park. It was a beautiful thing. And then you went out in the field. You had all these parents and all these children. Some of them got bored and started playing frisbee. But it was, it was like, um, just a total change in what I've known of Rogers Park. I've been here since seventy-two, and I've been here through the good and the bad, and bad and good. But the, the whole ambiance of the city is changing, not just from the sports and entertainment, not just because we're gonna have high-end retail, not because we're renovating Market Street, but all the things for kids, you know, the LA Philharmonic Youth Orchestra, Girl Scouts, Greater Los Angeles, moving here. Um, all the investment by big sponsors into our parks. It's like, we have to look for things to pay for to do at our parks now, because everybody wants to be part of Inglewood. for things to pay for to do at our parks now, because everybody wants to be part of Inglewood. And so I just wanted to tell you, Eloy, that event was emblematic of the new Inglewood, but with the same people.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
So with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.